Okay, the City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order tonight, Thursday, May 16th at 7:00 PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You sit first.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
Commissioner Rorick.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
City Manager Agence.
Here.
Okay, on item four, approve of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, we have none. On to number six, for public comment, anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, we will follow up as necessary, and please remember to address up here at the Commission and myself as the Chair.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you so much for giving me time. Roland Walker is a 35-year resident of Marine City. You know, 35 years ago when I moved here, I moved, we had, I had a very good job, I had to pick a places to move, and I picked Marine City because of the parks, the family, the water, all the beautiful things we have in Marine City. And I'm here to try to keep that going and keep that going long past my years as a grandpa, so let's hear him speak on a couple of things. But, real quick, I want to talk about a couple of things. This is Police Memorial Week, there's 30,000 police officers in Washington DC, there are about 135 officers that passed away in '23. Unfortunately, one of those was Lieutenant Camerzell from Shelby Township Police Department, where I'm regarded as a police chief, so I want to mention his name and the loss for his family. I also want to talk a little bit about the Memorial Day Parade that's coming up, I'm a Vietnam combat veteran, and I served with Marines over in Vietnam, and we lost some young guys over there. And Memorial Day is for the fallen. And I know Marine City's always turned out, the police chief, DPW, has always done a great job, and I'm sure we're gonna have another one this year. It's at 10:00 down on Water Street, so I'm encouraging all the residents to turn out and support our veterans who are deceased. My dad was shot in Germany in World War II and was disabled all of his life, and my father-in-law lost his arm in Normandy. So I have a lot of background with veterans and things, so, and I'll be there for sure, and I'm sure we'll see most of you out there, and we really appreciate the turnout, the city's been very good about supporting our veterans. I want to mention why we're talking about that, I want to give a shout-out to DPW, we had a water leak one block away, and they jumped right on it and got the water back up really quickly, it was a pretty good water leak, and I see that they hung the banners for our veterans already through town, so a shout-out to the DPW. And I want to thank them, and this goes back to the City Manager and our department heads, the city is really doing well, it's running really well, I've been here 35 years, I think it's running as well as it ever has, and especially the Police Department with Chief Heslop, so I want to thank them. I think everybody knows why I'm here to talk, I want to talk about the proposed ordinance, the nice thing about it is you don't, you have to, you don't have to do anything, we already have an ordinance. So all you have to do is just pass on it and let happen what's gonna happen, there's been no petition drives, the economy for pot shops is not real good, I don't see a movement for anybody pushing anything in town, so you just really have to stand pat and not do anything and support the ordinance that we passed several years ago, that we're not gonna have a pot shop. Why am I concerned about it? Well, my years, 40 years in law enforcement, a DARE officer, worked narcotics, I understand that pot is a big gateway drug, and most of the personal losses that I've suffered in my family and that I've seen on the streets, those people started to smoke the marijuana in high school. Here's a big problem, the marijuana shops, and I've brought this up many times, can have edibles, there's no way to control edibles. If they're eating edibles in the park, if they're eating edibles in the schools, whatever they're gonna be doing, there's no way to control that. And that's a big part of their sales, and that's what you're gonna have in town when the pot shop shows up, you're gonna have edibles coming into town, they're gonna leak into the schools. My brother is Assistant Principal at Armada, head of security, he's retired Almont Principal, retired police chief, we have many discussions about it, there's no way to control what's going on in the lunchrooms and the kids that are half-stoned in their high school. And so that's, there's a lot of issues with that, and I've talked about that numerous times, and that's the biggest reason I'm here, is for the kids, and my granddaughter, who's a year and a half, who's hopefully gonna live in Marine City, want to make sure we don't have a pot shop, that people aren't riding by and looking at all the big LED lights and the flashes that, you know, come on in and buy our pot and buy the edibles. Law enforcement, I've talked about this, Chief Heslop does a great job, he's got limited resources, it's a small town, he's not gonna sit on a pot shop and watch the kids who's selling, who isn't selling, who's going and buying, and passing it on to the kids, he's not gonna be sitting there concerned and watching a place 24/7 about the large sums of cash that are gonna be in that facility. So there's a big stress on law enforcement, I'm confident Chief Heslop will do a good job with every assignment he's given, but it's an extra burden on law enforcement, you don't need to put that on our Police Department and our community. The OWIs, the going down at the parks, the going in the parking lot across from the Catholic Church, picking up their pot, smoking it there, and then driving out of our community, OWI. So those are things to think about. So if you hear about the kindergarten kids in the ER because they got some edibles in our schools, that's on you, same for drunk driving. So I'm really begging you, I hate to use that word, begging you, but to just stand pat, don't do anything, think about the kids, and thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to approval of the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Mayor, if I may, correction was brought to my attention yesterday on this, on the, under the City Manager's report, I had still left one of my internal notes in there, so that was changed, you'll see there's a, it's kind of highlighted by a capital "he" in the middle of the paragraph there. And that was changed to, City Manager spoke about the MML and the MML Foundation grant, one of three communities receiving it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Jason.
You're welcome.
All right, no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, who carries? On the consent agenda for item eight, we have the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, B, the Departmental Monthly Activity Reports, C, the Community and Economic Development Board Meeting Minutes of March 27th, 2024, D, the 300 Broadway Committee Meeting Minutes of March 25th, 2024, E, the Special Event Permit for the Marine City Lions Club Battle the Bands IV, F, the Special Event Permit for Friends of City Hall, the Crowd Rise, G, the Special Event Permit for the Silent Disco on the River's Edge, H, the Business License Application for Golden Hour Grooming LLC. And can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items A through H as presented?
I'll make a motion, we approve the Consent Agenda, letters A through H.
Support.
Motion to support. Just one thing I wanted to mention for transparency reasons, on the Special Event Permit, 8A, for the Marine City Lions Club Battle the Bands, I'm a member of the Lions Club, I completed this permit and submitted it in for approval, just so everyone was aware.
Yep, E.
Yep, E, yep. Okay. Any other discussion? Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item nine, for items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. 10 for Financial Business, 10A expenditures, including payroll of $263,991.08. Now, can I have a motion to approve those expenditures, including payroll, in that amount of $263,991.08?
Make a motion, we approve expenditures, including payroll, for $263,991.08.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10B, under Financial Business, expenditures, and that's for the Safe Drinking Water Project, $267,500. Can I have a motion to approve the invoice for Fleyce-Vanderbrink for the Safe Drinking Water Project in that amount of $267,500?
I'll make a motion, we approve the invoice from Fleyce-Vanderbrink for the Safe Drinking Water Project for $267,500. Support.
Okay, the motion and the support, any other discussion?
Just for the benefit of the public, Scott, I think it would be good to say that this is, you know, an expenditure that we had to incur but is covered by the Safe Drinking Water Grant.
Correct, this is part of a reimbursable portion of the project, through both the combination of the $13 million grant and the $13 million loan, we are paying upfront approximately $500,000 of total expenses, which again, will be reimbursed when the proceeds are received for the project.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Hey, under C for the Plenary Financial Statements of April 2024, I have a motion to receive and file the Plenary Financial Statements of April 2024.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion and the support. Any discussion?
Great job, Katie.
All right, and roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yep.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on 10D, for the Public Hearing for the Water Sewer Rate Change for the 2024-2025 Fiscal Year. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission will conduct a hearing to receive comments on the Water Sewer Rate Change for the 24-25 Fiscal Year. The public hearing has been declared open at 7:13. Does anybody who'd like to speak at the public hearing? Anybody?
Try to close it at 7:14.
Okay. All right, so the public hearing is now closed at 7:14. On 10E, Public Hearing, the 2024-25 Fiscal Year Budget. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission will conduct a hearing to receive public comments on the 24-25 Fiscal Year Budget. The public hearing is declared open at 7:14 PM. Anybody wish to speak? Any public, Mr. Walker?
Well, so it's more than a minute. I again want to thank the City Manager, and specifically the Police Chief, and the budget, and how we're running. 35-year resident here, the budget's always been pretty contentious, I think it's, things are moving pretty smoothly. Again, our City Manager, department heads deserve credit for that, the city's doing really well, so I know it's just, I'm reiterating what I said before, but I want to make sure I get that on the record, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I can make a comment, I just think it's important again to reiterate that the budget that is presented tonight for the public hearing and for consideration for adoption reflects a balanced budget, it also reflects a budget that does not have an increase of any taxes to our residents, and again, achieves all of the goals and objectives that were set forth in the budget workshop. It also contains moderate improvements for capital items, and we will have additional amendments that will come in the future, but again, the most important piece is a completely balanced budget, preserves fund balance, and does not have a change to any of our millage rates for our residents, so it is not a tax increase at all.
Thank you. Okay, and anybody else? Okay, the public hearing is closed at 7:15. And on to 10F, the Resolution 12-2024, the 24-25 Budget Appropriations Act. Can I have a motion to approve the Resolution 12-2024, that's a resolution to adopt the Fiscal Year 24-25 Budget Appropriations Act.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 012-2024, the 2024-2025 Budget and Appropriations Act.
Support.
Motion and the support, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to G, the 24-25 Fee Schedule. Can I have a motion to approve the fee schedule for the 2024-2025 Fiscal Year as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, I got one, are we gonna deal with the business licenses? I know we've talked about it a couple of times, there, I think we're kind of high on those, are we gonna do anything with that?
There is an updated version of the fee schedule in your packet this evening that reflects a reduction of the business licenses. I believe that we will also have additional future consideration and discussion as we dive deeper into that specific ordinance, as well as the vacant building ordinance in the future, but we did, by way of discussion with the City Clerk, make a reduction in that. We felt, again, that when you had such a higher amount, it should be reduced, and it shows now a reflection of that dollar amount being reduced. On that note also, there was a question and concern that was raised by another Commissioner relating to water turnoffs and turnoffs, we've also made an adjustment to lower those amounts as well.
Okay, so, I'm looking at the line in there, I'm turning, what page is this? I don't even know if it's got a page.
Six.
I mean, it's, it's 200, 100 clerk plus 55 building and 45 payable to Fire Authority, I mean, I thought that's what we'd been at, was the 200.
Isn't it 120 total? The rightmost column is the revision.
The 75 and 45, that's what you're gonna do, the 120?
Yes.
What about, okay, you got the, when they expire, because we've had that issue too, so that's covered on the next line there? So then they'd only have to pay 75 if they're partial year? All right. Okay. Is that for me?
We may have some changes in the ordinance in the future as we discuss this as well, because there are some other topics that we think merit discussion.
Okay.
Of how we would have transferability, location moves, those type of things, so look forward to more productive conversation.
All right, well, thanks on that for the business license, I'm sure the businesses are gonna be a little bit happier.
And then just for clarity for anybody reading this online, again, the not right, rightmost column, but the second to rightmost column is, is the suggested.
Request.
Change, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it said it's for the fee revision request.
Right. So, and just for anybody looking at this, understand that that's the recommended change.
Just to note on the water changes, I appreciate the work on this, moving it around a little, it's much more amenable to my own tastes. I reiterate a comment I made last meeting a bit, that I feel strongly, water should be a right, I don't like that people have to pay for it, I don't like that it can be taken away from them, I think that's a bigger question than what this commission can handle, and what Marine City could do with this. It's a much larger kind of problem, but this is much more amenable and agreeable, in my opinion, to help our residents out.
And regarding the water also, thanks to Jason.
Yes.
For making the link for water assistance resources on our website PDF, so that you can download it from virtually anywhere on any device.
Very nice. Okay. No other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, on to 10H, ARPA reallocations.
Yes, Mayor, based on previous conversations that the Commission has had, I took notes from both February and some comments in May, excuse me, February and April, some discussions that we had, readjusted those accordingly and presented to the Commission this evening for your consideration, assignment of those allocations. It's important that we get those assigned, some of these projects are absolutely ready to complete, be finished, and clear out, but our time clock is ticking for compliance by having all of our allocations completed by the end of this calendar year, this will get us very close to that goal.
And then we don't have to make any changes tonight, vote on the changes?
It would be appropriate if you agreed to at least approve the reallocations as presented, that we would do that. Keep in mind again, as we adjust, as costs come in, hopefully lower like they have, we'll be coming back to you before the project is completed, but yes, tonight this would be helpful, then it locks in these projects and these dollar amounts based upon previous discussions. Should be a roll call vote, please.
Okay, then can I get the motion then, to approve the ARPA funding reallocations pursuant to the discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ARPA funding reallocations as presented in our agenda packet this evening.
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to 11A, that's Ordinance 2024-03 for the Water Sewer Rates, Second Reading and Adoption. Can I have a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-003, an ordinance of the City of Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, to amend Number 51.35 relating to the water rates and Number 52-60 relating to the sewer rates, and continuing debt service charges for second reading and adoption?
Make a motion, we approve Ordinance Number 2024-003, the Water and Sewer Rates for Second Reading and Adoption.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, and discussion.
I have a question. On these requested turnoff at service address, they've gone up, is that what it's reading here on my copy?
Two of them have leveled, there is an increase on the first two at a flat amount, and we've reduced that, turnoff for delinquent accounts, I think that was the largest concern. The first two that are adjusted are adjusted to actual costs, so I think that was part of the discussion, we had to make sure that we are covering manpower and equipment costs, and no more than that, and that's what we've done, and those two adjusted, we were low, and then taking into consideration the conversation from the Commission of not creating the delinquent turn-on-turnoff as a penalty, but still having it remaining in place and making it the same dollar amount.
Okay. I also want to flag, we've talked about this previously, the, we've had a study done about what our water rates probably should be to cover costs and things like this, and that came in at a much higher raise than what we've been doing, we've been keeping this low, in part to the management and operation of our facilities, but understanding for those who are concerned about the 2% hike, this is far lower than what was projected and expected at this point.
If I may, Commissioner, just to expand on that a little bit, you're absolutely right, we should have been looking at tracking, at least for inflationary purposes, to have been around 4.7 to 5%, and we are way below that. We also have a budget, and this resolution also reflects no increase to the ready-to-serv portion of that, so this is only a usage portion. We're very cognizant of the, you know, the burdens on the back of our residents, and we know we have a large project coming forward, so we want to keep those costs in check. We know that, you know, each year we review the rates, we may not be able to maintain a 2%, 2.5% increase on an annual basis, but this year we felt it was important to do our part, presenting you rates that are keeping it on a lower scale of things for benefit of our residents. Thank you.
And then you are still working on like the payment programs, different?
Yes, so, you will have in front of you, likely in June, a couple of different pieces of policy recommendations, one, and I want to reiterate, a comment that was made by Commissioner Ross, we do have resources that are available for folks that are having a problem paying their bill and meet certain criteria, largely it's income-based, but there are programs, we have links on the City website, if anybody were to call or stop in City Hall, we'll assist them on pointing them to those programs to assist on making their utility payments. Also, if someone does not fit within that criteria for income, these are largely income-based programs, we are always willing to work with residents for a reasonable payment arrangement, rather than have them lose their service, risk losing the service, we will take every effort to work on a reasonable payment plan, and we are also going to be bringing to you some adjustments to that payment plan policy, as well as a leak adjustment policy that we're looking at implementing here. There were several attempts over the past, you know, 10 years to do something, but we really think that we have a robust program that works well, that we're gonna be bringing to you, that will further assist people who have a leak that has been repaired and be able to adjust certain portions, that certainly is a financial benefit, so those are coming to you likely in June, that will all add to reinforcing the goals and objectives of the Commission.
Very nice, thank you. Anything else? Hey, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rorick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to 11B for Purchase Approval, and that's for the wastewater plant screw pump replacement.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you are aware, this is now a year and a half-plus project that we've been working on, a portion of the funding was set aside in the fiscal year budget that we're currently in, that was approved last year for the replacement, we were really waiting for these pumps to be able to arrive, they were on back order, they have arrived now, we, as I noted in the memo, had been invoiced several months ago, but we're certainly not going to pay for an invoice for items we did not have in our possession. So, the physical pumps have arrived, requesting for the authorization of payment, and I think for those of you that were involved in the budget process last year, you'll recall that this did go through a bidding and selection process, trying to find comparable pumps, contractor, again, Kennedy is really the Michigan provider, Kennedy Industries, so we would like to be able to get the payment for the pumps, and then Mr. Schmidt from the DPW is working on to Phase 2, which is the installation, there'll be a separate billing for that. I can report at this point, at least the good news is, we are below the originally budgeted amount, and we are hoping that that will remain that way. Our concerns are labor costs, which have continued to increase, but right now we are tracking below the budgeted amounts, and again, with the approval of the ARPA reallocations, a portion of that is included in the total amount here, so would be requesting consideration from the Commission to approve the payment of the invoice to Kennedy Industries, $234,544, as stated in the memo that's attached.
This does state in, you know, our documentation here about a proposed to waive the competitive bid, which we've kind of done at this point.
I believe it was done originally when bids were solicited, but I would ask that that be added to the motion, in case it wasn't done previously. Again, Kennedy Industries is the sole supplier of this in the state of Michigan, but I think that it would not hurt for us to do that again.
And we have their pumps.
Yes, they are, they are being kept at Kennedy's location right now, they are in, physically here.
Yeah.
And again, Mr. Schmidt is working on coordinating the installation portion.[1739.53]
I just raise it because if we, for some reason, refuse to waive competitive bid and try to seek that out, these pumps are sitting there waiting for us while we'd be...
Yeah, they were ordered on a previous approval, again, going back into last year. Last, I believe, last May, so it's almost a year.
Yeah, a long time. All right, I'll make a motion that we waive competitive bidding for the screw pump replacement
Support.
pumps.
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'll make a motion then we approve the purchase of the pumps from Kennedy Industries in the amount of $234,544.
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rurg.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
On to 11C, the adult-use marijuana facilities, update and discussion.
Mayor, do you mind if I speak from the podium?
No, go ahead, sir.
My bell.
I thought it would be appropriate on this topic to just recap a little bit and bring everybody up to speed, including the public. Concerns that we're kicking this issue down the road too often is unfounded. I think what you've been doing is you've been giving this matter strong consideration, and I appreciate that effort. Under the law, under what's known as MRTMA, the acronym for the adult use, if a local community is going to put an ordinance in place that assigns the number that you're going to allow in your community, you have to develop a competitive process to get to that number. And I have cautioned you in the past that I believe that in a community your size with the staff that you have, creating that type of a process might be straining on the resources of the community, and so other smaller communities like yourselves, and I have a few that I've done it with, we turn to getting rid of the competitive process and just allocating portions of property in a community that would be considered to be permitted categories where these facilities could take place. So if you're in that turf, you can have a facility. If you're not, you can't. So what it would avoid is, the competitive process could be, well, we're going to take the first four viable applications. So there's a couple thoughts there. The first four, got to monitor that, and then we got to say viable applications. So you got to screen who's a viable application, who's not a viable application. This has been the primary breeding ground for litigation on these matters, is, you know, the criteria in the city of Detroit, you know, had a criteria, you know, how much money have you donated to the city? If you saw the paper in Harper Woods, they created a competitive race, and I meant, I mean race, race, where people got trampled trying to get in and get their applications in, and they had to stand in the parking lot in the circles and get ready to go. So that one got challenged in court. I was engaged to defend the ordinance, which we prevailed, but it was definitely challenged. So when we started looking at a turf property-oriented scheme, we had comments, great Claus, Mr. Clausen, did I say great Clausen? I didn't mean to say that, Bill, but I'll stick with it. The great Clausen said, you know, I'm looking for, you know, I'm not in favor of this, but if we're going to have anything, I want those buffers enforced, right? I mean, that was the, and so we started talking about buffers. And when we started talking about buffers and the need for setbacks from the schools and from other things in the community, the city manager and I began to have trouble saying, okay, well, what property is left when you apply the buffers? Commissioner Ross then had some great thoughts about the buffers, and so we remachinated things, and we came up with the same issues. We're having trouble resulting with property. So if I was before you and I say, well, we're, I want to create a heavy, heavy industrial zone in your community, and you said, okay, let's do it, but then we didn't allocate any land where it could happen, it's not a good ordinance. It's an ineffective ordinance. We cannot enact a turf-based ordinance that doesn't provide for turf for these facilities to exist. It's not an appropriate ordinance. So we've been battling with that a little bit. Going back to the comments made during public comment, as you sit here today, you already took action on medical marijuana facilities. That was a no-action action, and you fulfill the obligation. You're out on medical, and medical's not an issue really anymore because it's been supplanted by adult use. There's really nobody trying to get a medical marijuana facility much anymore. When adult use came, and they passed a law allowing for adult recreational use facilities, that required an affirmative act, and you took the affirmative act and said no. So correctly stated during public comment, as we sit here today, you're in a position where you've already satisfied the law with respect to your position, so we're considering an ordinance. What I, I just don't want, I just don't want the folks to have an idea that it's on and off the agenda and we're just not working on it. I think that you have two things that are coming up that I believe help you. You have your master planning coming up, and you have your zoning ordinance coming up, all to be completed generally before the end of 2024, if you guys stay on schedule. It might be wise, the city manager are going to come back to you probably at the next meeting and show you what land is available for these facilities if we apply the buffers you would like to see, and I know you guys have looked at all those circles until you're a little bit blurry-eyed, but we might come back and recommend that that is not going to work, and so instead we'd like to create an actual zone in the community where these facilities could be, and have that discussion incorporated into your master plan discussion, and have that discussion implemented into your zoning ordinance discussion, and see if we can work out a strip of area in your community where you'd be willing, as a commission, to allow these facilities on a turf basis and not a competitive process of numbers. I did this in the Village of Oxford. We did a turf ordinance. The room was packed. I felt like a small little thing under a microscope. We're going to get bombarded with facilities. Oh my God, you're opening it up. I mean, there's unlimited numbers, and we have two, and one of those is closing. So it didn't result in the onslaught that people had thought it would. I think comments about the market are accurate. The market for these facilities has been decreasing over time. There was a mad rush, and I think it's stabilized, at least in the market. So I just wanted to remind everybody, we're not, we're not trying to continuously just adjourn this matter. The city manager and I have been way too much time looking at maps from the county and trying to keep so many feet from schools, so many feet from residential, so many feet from institutions, so many, you know, and when we do that, we just are not having a lot of success with meaningful property, with meaningful property for this industry to come into your community. So I just want to remind everybody of that and answer any questions you have as to this process. Oh, I'm sorry.
Who gave you a bell? I think there's going to be a couple questions that are going to follow from the public with this, and I think the biggest one is going to be, what is different from the ordinance and the mapping that we've done now versus developing a new zone or district that is going to be facing similar questions of where it is in relation to other properties, things like this? And so I know part of the zoning process, we get to kind of remap this and relace some things out, but can you talk more about that process?
Yes, I can.
And why it's different?
It's a great question, Commissioner. It's a great question. So when you combine this discussion with your master plan, you get a, you get, you know, the master plan tells you where everything, where you would like everything to be. It's not necessarily where everything is, it's more of a wish list of where you would like everything to be, and you would have opportunity to pick that area. When you combine the process with the zoning ordinance, you then can build in the zoning ordinance criteria for a facility. For example, you can build in the setbacks, you can build in the lighting requirements, you can build in the odor control, you can build in the waste hauling, you can build in the parking, you can build in, a lot of these facilities are now trying to revamp themselves into drive-throughs, so they're taking orders, and then the people come to a window, and instead of having to come in, they just pick up their goods and pay their fees. So what you can do by combining it with the master plan and with the zoning ordinance is you can pick the right area based on where you see everything else going, and you can write in the criteria that will make that area work. That would be the theory. Now, your, the real crux of your question, I think, is, is, well, if you pick that area, are you still going to meet the circles? And we don't know yet. We don't know yet, because we'll be coming back to you. I think if you let this play out through the process, through the planning commission, and through the zoning ordinance, it can come back to you with a, with a real strong recommendation as to exactly where this should occur if you elect to have it occur.
So my understanding from other communities was that, and actually reading the Michigan CRA website and website related to the MMTRA, like you mentioned, that you can create green zones. Well, they were very vague on what that is, and it actually basically said refer to your local ordinances, but I think what we've been able to do by virtue of running these setbacks is take the two areas of the city where this could be viable, and then my understanding of, from what other cities have done with these green zones, is just said, well, look, we identified that this is basically a one or two areas where these could go, but the setbacks don't perfectly meet, so it's just the properties that are within this area.
Right.
Those are allowed.
And that's, that is exactly, so we, just the example I gave...
Instead of 500 feet, 488, you know, but it's still, is generally...
I gave you the example of a village, and so what we did was, we, it had to be an industrial zoning, but it could only be in a certain part of the industrial zoning, because the industrial zoning in total didn't meet a lot of the setbacks, but a portion of it did, and so our ordinance targeted that area as being an area where you could put a facility. You've already kind of come to a conclusion that the, you don't want all the types of establishments that are in the law. You were, you were not happy with grow operations. You really were looking at, I think, just the retail-type operation for your community, and that's what was under consideration. So Brian, the answer, yes, if we can work that through the master plan and the zoning ordinance, that's what the communities have done to come up with. Well, if we do put it here, we can put these other restrictions on it in the zoning ordinance, so that even if it's not quite the setback we really wanted, we're doing other things to address that. Yeah. So you can berm, you can look for walls, you can look for screening, you can, it's all kinds of mechanisms that you can do. Recently, I have, in the last week, worked on the, there was a citizen petition initiative in a community near you, and that one has some issues, and the community's going to work through that. I think the deadline for getting an initiative end is looming near. I think if it passes and you haven't received one, I strongly recommend you let the, let this be aired out in your master planning and in your zoning.
And then one more question, just in our fee schedule, I happened to notice that lot split was one of the options, and...
Yes.
In the ordinance that we had created previously, even though there was no singular lot that met all the setbacks...
There were splits available.
Yes.
Yes.
So why is that not an option? Or is it...
That is an option, and we would like to, I think if we look at those splits, we looked at the splits, and we kind of came to a conclusion, man, with just another inch, there could be a little, a couple more splits available, and we could really have a meaningful ordinance. So you also, you also in your draft have a provision that says no variances are available. So we might want to look at that and say, variances are only available if your variance is, for a matter that is less than 10% of the otherwise established buffer. So if you're seeking something that's minor, we can hear your variance. If you're seeking a total departure from the buffer itself, we're not going to hear you. So there's all those mechanisms we can put into play, and then we can have a meaningful ordinance. I think, you know, and I've had some phone calls to my office from folks that weren't happy with this issue, or maybe just with me. Was that you calling, Laura? But I really think what you're trying to do is you're trying to balance what you think is safe for the community, but also give this industry a chance. And I don't think it's wise if we just enact an ordinance and then everybody looks at the land and says, well, there's no land available. There's no meaningful land available. That's unfair. Why would we do that?
Well, that was my next question, is, yeah, would that potentially cause litigation?
You would probably get sued over that. It would be like, it would be like saying, here's our ordinance on fast food drive-throughs, but we didn't allocate any land for those, but here's the ordinance. I mean, that's, that's, that's like a lawsuit just being ready to be drafted.
My thing with that is, we voted on something before, it was no for everything, okay? But when they started to try to bring this in, they were trying to look at places, but yet, to me, there's, they're saying churches, schools, a hospital, stuff like that, but when you get into other areas, like in the mall, where you have kids going to a show all the time, you got that area there, they say, well, it's business, it can go in there. To me, it can't, you know, because, to me, I'm treated just the same as a school or a church.
And, Bill, those are the things that you can air out in your master plan discussion.
Well, we've been discussing this for quite a while, and the people that were here, there was nothing that came through a petition...
You're correct.
To do anything.
We have not been, we have not been served with a...
Algenac had a petition, and they lost.
Right.
I mean, they, you know, they can't happen in Algenac. They're going to try again.
I understand.
But they already had a vote on it from the majority of the people in the town, and it went down.
MRTMA, MRTMA is a two-way street on the petition initiative process. It says that any person can put forth a citizen's petition to establish the number of facilities that should be in the community. So somebody could start a petition and say, I think, I want to, I want to get it on the ballot that the Marine City shall have four openings for facilities. On the other hand, we could have a citizen's initiative petition that says, we want zero. You have received no petition on either side of that coin.
I want to point out that with the length of the discussion that this Commission has had on this issue, there's also a faith that we're going to make a decision, whether it's one way or the other, that this ordinance was coming. We've had some looks at it, some readings of it. That can preclude the energy in the public to start a petition to get one signed because they believe it's going through, right? And we've signaled that we were moving on this one way or the other. And not resolving this tonight, which obviously we're not going to, but continuing it down in discussion, the master plan has a lot of material that we need to cover and go through. There's going to be a lot of sticky points on that already, that we're adding another complex issue on top of that. It does sound like it's an important way to go. I acknowledge that.
It's a way to go. It's a way to go.
But it makes sense that we have to have an ordinance that can be used. We've certainly had enough discussion up here and from the public that we're putting in order... that we're putting an ordinance forward that can't be used, and that's a problem. And that's a nonsensical solution to the issue. So I understand why we're looking at this direction. But I think we also at least have to acknowledge that part of this process has meant that we were moving on it so the public didn't need to take it into their own hands for the petition. And so we're operating with that kind of faith and understanding. And so if we're not acting on it now, either we're saying, "Okay, go ahead, start a petition." But by the way, we're almost at the deadline. It's a little late, which isn't fair. It's not fair to the public that we've kept this process going. And I understand why. I think the arguments are cogent. It makes sense. But at some point here, I think we need to take the space and have that discussion, have it out, and resolve it.
Commissioner, that is 80% of the reason why I wanted to speak on this tonight was exactly the perception that you are raising. I mean, I wanted to present the perception. We are... There's no game going on here. There's no can-kicking going on here. There's work going on here to try to put forth a meaningful ordinance. On the other hand, the perception is, is we're doing something, so we won't do something. And that is a bit unfair. I agree with you. And that's why I wanted to speak on it and remind us of what we are doing and how many hours the city manager has spent looking at circles overlapping on other circles. So any other questions I can help with?
No, like I said, when I made the motion for the, what was it, 1,000 square feet?
The 1,000-foot buffer, yeah.
What the federal government recommends. And then we went down, and it went down, and it went down. And then we finally found two locations. And then we had somebody come in and say, "Well, you're restricting us to two locations."
Yep.
But nothing, no petitions, no just, you know. I said, "They can sue you for anything they want. You can be sued for anything."
I agree, so...
And you think that you're going to do an ordinance so you're not going to get sued. You can't guarantee that.
Right.
Agreed. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with what we're doing. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Could I make a request for when we revisit this topic, if it is going to come up in master planning and zoning, that we can have some of the information in front of us that's going to be useful? Such as, you've done this, you said, in Village of Oxford. You know, can we look at some of the data of what's happened in that community?
Sure.
If the police department there has any response to what it's been like, whether it's become an untenable position to defend or to watch, or if it's raised issues in that community? Let's hear it out because it's a comparable example for what we're looking at.
Perfect.
So if we're going to do this discussion one more time, let's have all the cards on the table.
And Commissioner, you raise a good point because some of the initial conversations with communities on this issue, there was no data. Nobody, you know, we hadn't seen enough. We are getting to a time now where the data is available and the results are available.
The studies I've seen up to this point have shown a decrease in usage in marijuana among teens, at least, including in communities with dispensaries.
Right.
And I don't think a dispensary is coming in and decreasing... I don't think it's causation, right? A dispensary is reducing that. But I do think that there is... We're having a changing demographic among their youth.
Yep.
And their interests.
Okay.
One more thing. Do you foresee, or could you provide any data...
Yes.
For any forthcoming discussions on what the federal government reducing the category of cannabis might cause?
You're talking about removing it as a scheduled controlled substance, Schedule A, I think.
It's been... Its category has been reduced from the most significant to a lower category.
Yes.
It'll have a profound effect on law enforcement and incarceration. I'll look and see if I can get some stats on what it might do in the dispensary process and the usage process. The data is available now. Yes, I will get that for you.
Appreciate it.
Can I ask you about that for a second?
Sir? Please do.
All right, no, you keep it up.
All right.
Keep me in check, sir.
My bad.
So I know you're asking on a federal level, but in a current state level right now, we're dealing with issues over at the school where students have possession of a vape pen. Their penalty right now is that they commit to a speeding ticket. It's a similar crack.
Okay.
So they're not even going to be considered as a pregnant. So at the state level, that's how we're pushing it. We're writing every ticket. They have to go to court.
Got it.
Hope that answers your question.
Okay. I mean, I was sort of asking it in terms of, would it change? Would the federal change? Would changing in scale at a federal level result in any of the states who have currently legalized recreational marijuana, there, you know, some sort of federal thing superseding their state ordinances, if you will?
I mean, if you look in the draft ordinance that you are currently considering...
Yeah, I know I've mentioned it's federally legal, right?
There's a provision in there where I have made it clear we're not, you know, we're not going to be held responsible. And the people who would establish these facilities would be responsible if the federal government ever took a position, you know, that the facility is illegal because of the nature of the material at the federal level. To some degree, the federal government, for a while, has turned a blind eye, I think. Is that probably a good legal expression? To the issue. I mean, they've turned a blind eye to the issue and in favor of states essentially legalizing what is illegal under federal law.
I have three in another unit of government, and they've got the grow license and the sell. Neither one of them right now are really growing using that license. And Cloud is giving us their notice that they're leaving. So now I've got two that are still there. But we still have the... How would you say? The problem is when it's an industrial district, and you don't put sidewalks in, you don't put lights in, you don't do a whole bunch of stuff in an industrial district that you do in a residential district. And then when this came in, you got people going to the other two, and they have to walk in the industrial district in the street. So the city now has to put sidewalks in, streetlights. There's other things that get involved in that besides selling, you know. And right now, my clerk there has told me they wish they would never allow the licenses in their city.
That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there any necessary action?
Just informational.
Informational.
Okay. Okay. On to 11D for approval of professional engineering services agreement between the City and Marine City and Anderson, Xsteen, and Westrick Incorporated. I have a motion to approve the professional engineering services agreement between the City and Marine City and Anderson, Xsteen, and Westrick Incorporated.
So move. Support.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Van de Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now on to 12, new business, 12A, board vacancies. I'd like to announce the board vacancies for the following boards of term ending June 30th, 2024. We have vacancy on Planning Commission. We have TIFA for two openings, the Marine City Area Fire Authority Board, and two openings on the Library Board. Board applications can be found on the city website as well as available at city offices. Applications are due to the city clerk by Wednesday, June 12th, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. And is there anything additionally you want?
Just one more. I forgot to add in there, there is also one vacancy on the Historical Commission. That is not up for term, but there has been a vacancy on there.
Okay.
Planning 1, TIFA 2, Fire Authority 1, Library 1, Historical Commission 1.
Library 2.
Library 2, sorry.
Yep. Okay. And then on to 12B, the Clerk's Department for Tabulator Purchase.
Madam Mayor, if I can...
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I wasn't going to take it. We'd be that pleasure, sir.
I got you. And go.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I bring to you tonight a request to purchase two new tabulators. I believe I touched on this a couple of times during a department head report and also the annual report. Going through the presidential primary and receiving two of those new tabulators through statewide grant, they are much faster. They process ballots much quicker than our current tabulators that we have had for, I believe, six or seven years now. The current tabulators we have that we use on Election Day will be obsolete in another year or two. So we would have to purchase new ones at that point. I had spoken with County Commissioner Van de Bosch and inquired about using some ARPA funds to purchase us two new ICP-2 tabulators. He said to get the paperwork together, and he would present it at the county level. I have presented that paperwork to the county based on the argument, I guess, that we want to, number one, reduce lines on Election Day with the quicker processing of the ballots. It'll reduce lines, which brings up the point of being in close proximity to other voters on that day. That, I think, falls under the guidelines of the ARPA funds. I did receive word from the county that it may not fall under those guidelines. But again, I use that basis of if we can process them quicker and keep people out of lines and in close proximity to one another, as well as establishing an absent voter counting board, seeing that one-third of our registered voters in the city are absent voters. So that would allow us to process those quicker on Election Day. And as they come in throughout Election Day, we can be kind of on par with processing them instead of being backed up on the absent voter ballots. So I come to you today to ask for approval to purchase two new Dominion tabulators from Election Source, which is under my deal contract pricing, not to exceed $15,000. And this would be pending approval of county ARPA funds or county funds in general. The county did indicate that if ARPA funds were not able to be used, that they do have some other funding options that they would need to get approval for if this was possible. Again, if it's not approved at the county level, we'll make do with what we have. It would be great to help, you know, assist voters to get in and out of here quickly on election. Also, under the my deal contract pricing, that is the contract through the state, through Dominion tabulators, and our purchasing policy states that if it's under my deal, I don't believe we need to waive competitive bidding. So just the approval of the purchase, again, pending the approval of county funds. The lead time on it is two to three weeks. So I'd like to get, if we can get approval now and then await the county's decision, and as soon as we receive that, if it's a yes, then I can call and get them ordered, get them programmed, and they'll be ready to go for August. Any questions?
I don't think that... I know, generally speaking, we've said that my deal is good and that we shouldn't have to waive competitive bidding on that. But I don't believe that we amended the purchasing ordinance to say that yet, have we?
We have not.
Okay. So we still would need to waive competitive bidding, which I have no issue with. But we've said this, you know, again, the my deal is a...
You can't get anything any cheaper than my deal.
You're not going to be able to get anything cheaper than mine.
Right. They've already bid it out. I do believe there's a provision in the policy.
It's not going to hurt to just waive that.
I think we have waived it, although my deal has done the competitive bidding on our behalf.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Because they have statutory requirements through Office of Management and Budget to do just that, the competitive bidding portion. But I think we have.
Why don't we take a minute and a half and waive it?
Exactly. I was going to say, out of practice, we've waived it in the past, even though it's through my deal, just to ensure, so...
I would just like to point out one more thing. You see the quote on there from Dominion Voting, "These would be purchased through Election Source, which is our supplier of election materials." And that quote is for $13,186. That does not include shipping. I'm still waiting on the shipping price. So that's why I'm asking for the not to exceed...
Kind of a do not exceed.
The $15,000. Yeah, I mean, I can give you a ballpark. That'd probably be about $1,000 for shipping because that's what our voter assist terminal costs to ship. But I don't want a hard line on that. I'm still waiting word from Election Source on that.
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Guess I better get back to take the vote.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask for a motion.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we firstly waive competitive bidding for the two Dominion tabulators through the... Well, yeah, through my deal, but it was a specific supplier.
Dominion.
Dominion.
Election Source. Thank you.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Van de Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I will secondly make a motion that the clerk be allowed to purchase two tabulators of the Dominion brand, not to exceed $15,000, and pending the approval of county or ARPA funds.
Support.
Any discussion?
I did county or just so that, because you said that, you know, it could be ARPA.
Yes.
But you said that there may be another resource they could tap, so... Just so that it covers all bases.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Van de Bosch.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the 13 administrative reports, 13A, the city attorney report.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. 13B, the city manager report.
I appreciate the attorney giving me his time. Thank you very much. So I have a lengthy list, but I'll try to make it as expedient as possible. Of course, spring may have sprung for at least one day this week, possibly two finally. We're getting a lot of questions and inquiries about items and activities in the city, many of which I've spoken to several of you on. So starting on the list, I want to discuss the totlot project. As you are aware, we received the T-Mobile grant for the replacement of totlot equipment in downtown park. We did order the equipment, and after several months, the equipment arrived to the DPW. Our DPW crews went in when they had their downtime here at the beginning of, well, the beginning of what we thought was the spring season. Were able to remove the equipment from the park. And in preparation of installing the new equipment, have the new equipment delivered, had it delivered to the DPW, sorted out the equipment, we're ready to put it together, and it is not quite a Lego kit like we would have imagined. So part A going to part B was not as easy as had been originally assumed. Therefore, we are having to look for a qualified company that does this installation. And the reason that it's a difficult process is this is a modular, pre-manufactured playscape system. So it's not like it's separate components. So you're putting in a small component here and another. It all connects together. And there is a concern of making sure we do it the correct way. Our DPW is very good at getting everything out of there, and they're very good at what they do. But the specialty is pretty much underground utilities and streets, not playground equipment. So we are in the process of gathering price quotes and estimates from qualified companies that do just this work. They are licensed, insured, and trained and certified through the state of Michigan as playground inspectors and installers to do this job. We are hoping to have that information here in the next couple of weeks that I can provide to you at least three sources of qualified bids and select someone. AEW has been assisting us in providing some guidelines and information. And I also want to thank Mr. Tony Lipinski, who's the director of the Recreation Authority of Roseville and East Point. It's good to know people from a former life who gave me a list of 11 companies that may do this type of work. So we are going through those right now. I just want to assure you and the public, we want to make sure that it's installed and it's safe. We couldn't leave the previous equipment there because there were safety issues with that equipment. And taking away a component or two that were deemed unsafe basically made the rest or the entire playscape non-functional. So we want to have that new equipment installed as soon as possible. And I will keep you updated. That likely will be an agenda item dependent on the cost, but I imagine it'll exceed our threshold. In line with that, we had received a complaint concerning our small existing fishing pier on Bell River Road that it potentially was structurally unsound. Many of you recall that was a volunteer effort a number of years ago to build that. However, looking at those concerns in a serious regard, we did have that inspected today. However, looking at those concerns in a serious regard, we did have that inspected today by structural engineers. They do not have the report. It does appear to be structurally sound and secure, but again, we want to make sure that we have licensed professionals that are giving us the stamp of approval. We will need to make some repairs cosmetically over the years. Some wooden components are showing their wear, and we have some concrete at the curb that'll have to be fixed. But as soon as we have the report, I'll keep you updated. There may be minimal repairs to get that back functional. It is currently closed. The DPW did close that off by basically putting a board type of barricade. That was being climbed over. I had to have them put snow fence around that yesterday. I don't want to be an indication that it's gonna snow. It's for safety, so a safety fence, we'll call it a safety fence, until we get the clearance. So we're waiting for that. As I mentioned in the previous meeting, we were very fortunate to receive approval for grant funding for a new fishing pier to be developed in what we're calling now our little Marina District. So to be directly across the Bell River from our Marina adjacent to the existing kayak and canoe launch area. And we are going to begin the pre-design, pre-engineering. That'll all come to you for various points of approval, but it will basically be placed over, if you're familiar with where the old Bell River Bridge abutment is.
Yeah.
It's kind of ugly and still there. This will actually cover that, provide additional structural basis, and we hope that that project will be underway in fall of this year. That we won't be able to see the full use until next year, but it's wonderful to be able to have received significant funding from various sources to be able to do that. The kayak and canoe launch, contrary to Facebook rumors, the city did not put it in and immediately take it back out. It has not been reinstalled this year because there was a concern that was presented to us that there may be some problems with folks that have mobility issues of being able to use that. This is an ADA-designed ramp. So we did place an order for some additional rollers and hardware, just about $1,000. We do have some additional park funding that we put in. Thank you for the ARPA approval. And that, those components should be, within a week or two weeks, being received, will be installed, and a launch will be put in. So I think that will be beneficial for people who may have had some, still had some issues with mobility, that adding those rollers and extra hardware will be helpful. So a lot of, a lot of water-related activities there, and of course, the park portion with the totlot. There was a concern that was brought up at the last meeting about the hotel downtown and the brownfield and the sale of the property. I believe some commissioners had asked for a little additional information. Mr. Davis, you can chime in if you feel. I just want everyone to understand that just because a piece of property is for sale, that does not invalidate the brownfield redevelopment process or the tax abatement that was previously issued. And actually, in the event that the hotel were to be sold for a higher price, and in fact, could do a couple of things. One, it will remove a capped limitation on the value that would be uncapped, so the value of the property would go up. That's a benefit to a tax capture, which also could benefit in the remaining four years, potentially being paid off early. So there is that possibility. But I think the deeper concerns were, this was taxpayer money that was put in. It wasn't a direct payment of taxpayer money from the city, of any of the city general fund monies. It was a tax recapture on the property after the cleanup with a new development with a higher value, and that difference between what the previous tax amount was and the new tax pays for the brownfield cleanup work. It's under a state statute, which is regulatory. It is very detailed, overseen by the County Brownfield Authority, who has a specialization. But most importantly, in addition to the non-taxpayer dollar piece, is built within that, there is a safety net, that if there is a default, we have a guarantee of repayment that directly protects the city, because the city had to obligate for the loan. So there is that protection. The risks that we would have otherwise would be a tax default or a bankruptcy. That is not the case here. The property is for sale. The property is still making its payments as put into the brownfield redevelopment plan. So I think that's important, that all of those pieces are still occurring, and there again are triggers for safety nets built in with that. So if anything were to change, by all means, we'd share that information with you, but right now, a sale is not necessarily a negative piece. It could actually benefit in the uncapping of the value and potentially paying off the remaining four years of the obligation sooner. Social district meeting, we held a social district meeting this past week. We had good attendance from licensed establishments that are not currently participating in the district. We believe that we're likely to pick up four more participants. We may lose one of the original, but that is likely to bring us five participants and would be then only three non-participating. That would be a great improvement, so we felt very good with the meeting of sharing of information. We're looking at possibly some modifications that we'll be bringing back to the commission based upon the meeting with the stakeholders. It's, you know, hours, for example. We understand the limitation of hours, but would the commission consider maybe giving us less time later at night to go a little bit earlier in the afternoon because of sports events and activities that people would come in to their establishments to look at? That makes sense, because usually if you're going to have problems, that we were concerned with, those are evening, late evening. So shaving some time and readjusting may be a good discussion point. But it was a very productive meeting, and we answered a lot of questions. And the two businesses that we're not able to make it, we're going to reach out to and make sure they have no questions or concerns, engage their interests. So expect more information when we get that from those folks. Today, the engineers, again, were out. They did a gracious little piece for us, knowing that their item was on the agenda tonight and with fingers crossed that it would be approved. Thank you. I'm sure they thank you as well. They did send out to us, bridge inspectors today, to be able to look at our city responsible bridge over the Bell River and to look at the MDOT bridge. I'm going to have a lot of additional information for you concerning our interactions with MDOT concerning the Bell River Broadway Bridge. It is in horrible condition. However, it's been indicated that it was inspected last September, September of '23, and they felt that, the state felt it to be in fair to good condition. I don't know how they missed the Sasquatch footprint-sized hole literally through that, but that's good condition, I apparently see. We've also been told that don't expect any improvements to that bridge until 2031.
Oh, my God.
That is not acceptable to us, and we're going to utilize the information provided by the engineering bridge inspectors to start to make our case and our argument, likely be asking this commission for a resolution to forward on to our state-elected officials and to the Director of the Michigan Department of Transportation. There will be no bridge by 2031, so it is a safety issue. And I think you'll be humored by the answer when we had said, "We have a problem with the sidewalk area crossings that have crumbled, deteriorated, and have a hole." The answer was, "Close them off and make people go into the street." There is no shoulder to go into the street there.
Yes, I know.
And you're at a blind curve. So if MDOT would like to sign off on any liability that they would pay for any injuries, I'm sure our attorney would be glad to prepare a document for them. So happiness does not abound in the world of bridge inspections from MDOT, and more to follow. Streets, the Paser evaluation process. I have received the estimate from AEW for the work. It has come in, and we'll come in front of you. I just received it actually today. Just less than $4,000 for the work, and that portion is the portion that's being fully reimbursed under a SEMCO grant. So I'll bring that to you at your next meeting for approval, so we can get started on the street Paser study, which is the evaluation study, and be able to put forward our capital improvement plan for streets. And these are streets that'll be beyond the water project, but this is great and moving in the right direction. And we held a meeting this afternoon on further development of our capital improvement plan in a five, 10, 15, and 20-year timeframes for all infrastructure in the city, water, sewer, storm, streets, and our physical buildings and facilities, water plant, wastewater plant, city hall, the whole gamut. I think that this is going to be a very well-put-together, long-term capital improvement plan that after this year will certainly tie into additional pieces of the budget. So very good meeting on that. And then the question of water billing, leak adjustments, that was addressed earlier. So I think that's my short, long list for you, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have on these or any other items.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I know I talked to you at the cemetery.
Oh, yes. So, spring, last week, Mother's Day. Rain on Thursday, rain on Friday, rain on Saturday.
Yeah.
Sunny, cold, but yet still soggy day on Sunday, Mother's Day, unfortunately. We couldn't get equipment into the cemetery because of the conditions to get the entire cemetery completed. They were able to go through and at least get the majority of the mowing done, the weed whacking. They could not get to all of it because of the wet conditions. They have since gone in there and taken care of that. However, I am putting out a abbreviated request for proposals for contractor services. It is becoming virtually impossible without the weather-related problems for a four-person Department of Public Works crew to be able to do all of this work. The water break that was spoken of last week, as you all know, was significant. They worked on that the entire day of Wednesday and then back again on Thursday morning. We were short one person who had left our service, so we had three folks. We have one part-time seasonal person. So it is very difficult. So I'm going to gather that information, bring it to you. That may be an option that we need to look at. So I want the commission and the residents to know, we are doing everything we can, but when you have an unforeseen incident like a water break in the nature that we had and weather conditions, conditions that we had for four, almost five days, that complicates the system. So we are very aware of it. Our DPW superintendent, he has family that's in that cemetery. You know, he certainly has an interest of making sure that it's taken care of, and we were able to get it accomplished. This week has been fairly decent for us, but I felt that it's necessary that we try to make an effort of seeing if we can get a contractor at reasonable price, compare that to what we have. We, again, we only have the staff that we have, and when these other incidents occur, it makes it very difficult. So everyone, please, understand, you know, the patience, and we don't want to go into an issue to where we have this prolonged throughout the season. The weather, we are almost in the same pattern that we started last spring with, as you can recall, and last July. I hope this July is better. If you recall, we had severe storms every Thursday, except for one in the month of July, and it was very wet and soggy. So if anybody knows how we can put a balloon or a cover over that, let me know. Also, some trivial pieces, if you weren't aware of this, it's over 17 acres of cemetery there, and we actually have more folks interred in that cemetery than we have residents in this city. We have about 4,200 versus our 4,000 residents. That's a lot of stones and things to work around. That is the time-consuming piece of mowing that cemetery, is to be able to weed whip and clean up, and then to, you know, clean all those clippings off. So, and I think that's important. You look at it, you really don't understand the true veracity of what we have there until you are out there looking, and 4,200, that's a lot.
I do know. I did talk to Jeff, too, and he is gonna look at, see if he can't get a couple drains, find a way, because I know my mom and dad are in the same area as his, and I mean, yeah, it gets wet in there, but he is looking at that, too, to see if there, any way he can drain it off.
And the clay ground is positive at certain times of the year and not great at wet times, because the water goes nowhere. So, yeah, whatever we can do to make those improvements, we're in and doing that now.
Related to the brownfield, if it did sell for more and the tax was able to be adjusted up, would it also be an option to keep the brownfield repayment the same, but the city take more taxes?
Well, I think the payment is established in the process of when the plan was approved and when the loan was taken. So the dollar amounts of that portion are the dollar amounts. Now, it can be paid early on this piece, so I would defer to Mr. Davis.
The capture would speed up the payments.
You likely would have excess. When, it would speed that up, so when they're paid off, instead of a four years, if it's paid off in two and a half or three years by accumulating that dollar amount, all the capture afterwards, when that's done and that obligation is met, that's tax capture back. That's increased value.
Right. So it would still be the, the city would, even if it went up, right, the only thing that would happen is it would pay it off faster, not that it would, more would go to the city.
If it gets paid off faster, you enjoy...
But then we get to reap the benefits earlier.
So in essence, more does come to the city.
Yeah.
At the point of the repayment.
So on these, on these programs, you're always looking for the tax value to go up.
Sure.
It speeds up the payment and leaves you with the residual incremental gain in the tax value.
Right.
I mean, the people should understand that nobody, nobody's taxes went up or down to facilitate this program. This is, this is just a redirection of taxes that are already being paid to meet two goals. Number one, you take a challenged piece of property in your community that has no value because it's contaminated, and you clean it up and put some value back into it. You use the incremental tax increase to pay back the work it took to do that.
Right.
And over years, you enjoy the benefit going forward. That land will always be usable, or for, it'll always have more value than it had when you started.
How does that work with the, with the goals that they had set in that contract about he was gonna produce 15 employees?
That's the 50% tax abatement. So that's a separate one.
That's in the tax abatement agreement.
Yes.
And he's never done that, so.
Yeah, and so, and again, that is a very difficult piece, because when you look and we, because the conversation did come up, we looked at it, and when you had on the heels of the pandemic, you had so many businesses that weren't at full capacity, so you've got that factor. Then you come back and you return, you have seasonal, but the real question becomes, do you call out the tax abatement piece because you're not meeting this criteria and you dissolve or eliminate the tax abatement, which part of that is used for a recapture and repayment? Does that then put the burden, even though they maybe haven't met every piece, does that put the burden entirely back on the city to then fulfill that loan? And that's not what we want to happen, is for us, to then be in a position to have to use taxpayer dollars to meet financial obligations. So it's, it's a very, I guess, difficult balancing act at times.
Well, I happened to have been in there for a wedding, and while the doors to the, the hotel were locked, that area had over 50 people in there and one ADA bathroom. How can they operate that as a business with, that operate that way when they can't comply with ADA? You might want to take that into consideration.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is the first I've heard, so that's certainly something to look into from a safety standpoint.
You gotta go through the kitchen to get into the, the ADA bathroom was probably for the kitchen people, because you have to go through the kitchen to get there.
And we'll look at that and address that between billing and fire side of things, too. I also want to point out that maybe there at least is an encouraging sign right now. There has recently been a help wanted sign, and one of the participants at our social district meeting was management representing the bar. So to me, that's, that's a hopeful sign that things are making a turn in the other direction of hiring new staff and that possibly looking at now an expansion of service and hours of the bar, potentially new restaurant opportunity. I don't know that for sure, but at least the indications are better than they were.
Yeah. I was just wondering, because they're leasing it to somebody else for the parties, but yet they're locking all the doors. It originally was part of the hotel restaurant package.
We'll look into that piece.
I believe that group, though, has left, and now their rent, they've moved over to the...
I think there is a change.
Yeah.
I think they're on the main, main floor area where the elevators go up, there's bathrooms on that floor, but you can't get to them because they got doors locked. You can't, you know.
Yeah, I, we'll look into it, and I'm not sure that the same arrangement from the previous company that was there is still in place, so.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, on to 13C, reports from department heads. We have several department heads here this evening, so.
Chief.
Just a couple of quick updates. I know I have been before you and spoke of the Flock camera system. I am happy to announce that they have finally been removed, and we don't have to worry about this anymore. Program that I was interested in, I think I made that publicly known, but with some issues with that company and the communication, we just decided to pull the plug, and they are now gone. So every camera that was set up in town has been removed. Another good, positive knock-on-what update, I have two people in a background phase. Once they get through their background phase, I will be fully staffed for the first time in a couple of years, so. in a couple of years, so knock on wood with some good things to come, with some good people. And the last thing I want to address is the, there was something posted on Facebook regarding some allegations that I had destroyed some evidence with the Attorney General investigating. There's a backstory to this that I feel that, you know, you guys should be aware of. Several years ago, we took a complaint regarding an assault down at Helsar Home. Was it Jason 2000, 2020, 2021?
21.
21, somewhere in there. Through a very thorough investigation, we sent criminal charges to the prosecutor, which were ultimately declined. There was no witness to any crime whatsoever, and we were told that if we had found any other witnesses, to resubmit it for investigation. Well, the officer that originally handled that complaint, through some disciplinary action, ultimately left his position with our police department and moved on. Shortly thereafter, he left the department, he generated a letter to the Attorney General making these allegations that I had destroyed evidence pertaining to that assault case at Helsar Home. Well, I knew it wasn't true, but as soon as I knew that that letter existed, I had contacted the city manager and made him aware that that in fact was happening. It sat on the Attorney General's desk for a couple of years. Finally, they assigned it to two detective sergeants out of the, I believe it was a Carroll Post. They contacted me, came down, interviewed me. I agreed to take a polygraph. I agreed to do whatever they needed me to do because I knew that there was no wrongdoing at all related to this case. The, the letter had indicated that this person actually had me on audio saying that I destroyed evidence, and when the detective sergeant has actually asked this person to provide that tape, that tape was never provided. Ultimately, I, I was never handed any paperwork that was an official investigation. I had no idea. I was cooperative through the entire thing and, well, the one time that I actually talked to the detective sergeants from the, from the MSP. And then I had made a phone call to inquire about it, and they said, yeah, out of sight, out of mind, we forgot, but we closed this a long time ago. So there's nothing, there was nothing to it. So those allegations were out there, that letter was out there, it got ugly. I just want you to be aware that there was no wrongdoing on my part, and I'm here just to tell you the story behind the whole entire thing, so.
Chief, can I, can I add something? I think it's also important to note that there was no correspondence or notification ever received by myself and nothing that I could locate from the previous city manager indicating any type of investigation or involvement from the state AG's office, nothing at all. And having been in this business a very long time, as you know, that is not how these things usually work. There is usually some type of communication sent, a phone call, an in-person, a letter to the administration of the city, usually to the city attorney, nothing. So that is not the normal course of any type of true bona fide investigation. So that does, you know, bring some question into the credibility of this.
Chief, what made its way onto social media?
Somebody tagged a citizen in town, and I believe the exact letter that was sent to the Attorney General, I believe, made it onto Facebook.
The letter that went to the AG made it onto Facebook?
Yep. And how I truly found out about this.
How would somebody have gotten that letter?
That's a great question. I don't know. So how I originally found out.
I've never even seen the letter.
How I found out about this was a, was a former coworker of mine who has moved on, and he's a transport officer up at the county. He contacted one of the officers in the department and said, hey, do you know what's going on here? And read the letter to this part-time officer. The part-time officer comes to me and I'm like, what? What? So I showed, I showed the entire report, I did everything, I was cooperative. I even offered to take a polygraph, and here we stand today, so it's all official, it's done and over with.
Do you have the social media postings?
I don't, I didn't keep any of that, no.
Do you know who was doing it, or?
I do. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be very forthcoming and honest, and I don't hide anything. I'm as transparent of a guy as you can get, so.
One follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Scott, you mentioned here that there's like, it's questions of validity of the investigation or the veracity of it. You spoke to detectives. What, what is the disconnect going on between, like, was the AG's office just not very concerned with this? Do they find kind of nothing there? Is that why you're saying that there wasn't much of a?
We, I know that in my experience as a city manager in other communities where I may have had some type of involvement from the AG's office, there's a notification that's made to the city. There was no notification, official notification. Actually, from my side administratively, other than the chief informing me, hey, I've had this call, there was no notification from MSP. We never, we never received the letter. I didn't get it, the attorney didn't get it, you know. So by virtue of you saying, hey, this is, this is what I've been told, this is what's happened, and it posted online, nothing. And that is totally out of the normal way that an investigation works of at least notifying the city through the administrator and usually both the city attorney, absolutely nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Good evening. You'll probably see a fire truck and a few firefighters walking around the businesses around town starting this week. We are doing our annual inspections of businesses and trying to get some Knox boxes out there. So if you see us walking around buildings, it's, we're doing our inspections. That's all I got.
You might have another one on that list after tonight's discussion.
It's like old home week here.
So we've been working on budget, lots of budget, got that done, and Drinking Water Project reports to the financial representatives working on that. Scott and I have been working hours, I think, getting them reports so we can get application turned in. So that's been the big project lately. Budget amendments coming up and hopefully a clean audit going forward, so feel good about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work.
Katie's family thinks that she actually has an apartment here now.
I'm also having there.
All right. And with that, we'll move on to Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
Well, we had the planning commission meeting here and the medical, that it was, when it came in with a plan for expanding the parking lot and stuff, and they had a retention base and then some other stuff. And we basically looked at it and said, we got a retention base and we need a fence around it. They only had a fence around one side, so the planning commission required to go completely around it. It's a safety issue because I can remember when they did the school and we made them fence in their retention pond at the school, the high school. And so that was passed, and they said they would take care of the stuff that was required. And it kind of threw me a little bit because, I don't know, they said something about, they didn't think that we had a parking lot, a parking lot ordinance, and I believe we did. And the other thing was, we had them look at was landscaping. And I believe we started one, if we didn't finish it, a landscaping ordinance. So that was discussed, and they agreed to, to everything that we brought up to them. And it passed, so that was what was on the agenda. Otherwise, I just go with the way it is. I just know that I'm in several communities right now. I try to not work on Fridays, and now I have to do a dangerous building board stuff tomorrow in the morning with a bunch of attorneys. So just be careful, watch yourself, kids are out. So that's all I got.
Commissioner Bryson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien?
I'll try to be brief. First, thanks to DPW and everyone for the fast turnaround work on the water break. That was well appreciated. It is election season, and with elections now comes the joy of misinformation online. Folks in our community, please verify the stories you're sharing. Please don't publish horrible allegations like this that are unfounded. This does damage to the community. Attacking city staff, whether the department heads, whether the employees, this is not right. Probably attack us as commissioners, as the politicians, that's more appropriate. Don't, don't attack the employees. It's not right. It's inappropriate use of time, it affects working conditions. This is just, it's going to be a troubling season. This is national political discourse is doing this, not just local. I did attend a CRA meeting that kind of focused this week on dispensaries and ways that they're moving. They're kind of changing a lot of the rhetoric now, focusing on basically community benefit programs from these different businesses. We heard briefly from Mr. Davis. So a lot of what's going on is there's grants now being available and various kind of boons from the state to these sorts of marijuana-related businesses that give to the community in various ways, right, to offset on that. And this kind of discussion on their own kind of sector of community benefits, I was in a different kind of my employment side of life meeting that encountered the Detroit Community Benefits Ordinance. What goes on in Detroit and various other locations throughout the state of Michigan is the development of new businesses in town and a city have to give and approved through, such as like the zoning commission, things like this, plans of where they're donating funds to various city efforts, right? Parks, employment opportunities, education, things like this. I think it's something over time we should consider for Marine City, certainly not on the scale of anything like Detroit. But with the recent conversations around the hotel, around other businesses in town, I think that there is a question of what do they do for the community? They do a lot for the community, but we don't always see those benefits as tangible, right? Something's on Water Street, how does it affect the other side of community? And that can be harder to understand. So discussion around this, I think, could make some of those efforts a little bit more tangible. Finally, we are here to hear these questions. There's a lot of questions that came up on Facebook recently, right? And we've heard about all of them here. Please contact the city offices with your questions and concerns around what you're hearing. Contact the city offices, contact your commissioners. We're up here to do that. Our contact information's on the city page. There were enormous amounts of questions about the playground, right? Why didn't it go up? Why didn't it do this? That's some pretty simple explanations, but it's easy to contact. I think actually a lot of citizens aren't thinking about contacting the city offices with these questions. It just doesn't kind of come up, and they sit there wondering why. And I was one of those at one point many years ago, so please feel free to reach out whenever you're concerned. That's all I have.
Commissioner Ross?
All right, I'm going to be spreading the love. So first, congratulations to all the eighth graders who this past Monday and Tuesday got to go and attend the Michigan Junior Honor Society trip to Mackinac Island. It was super cool. I chaperoned it with my wife. It was great. We have a great bunch of kids that go to school in the city and a great bunch of parents too, so that was a pleasure. Great job by Marine City High School Drama and the Middle School for the production of Wizard of Oz, so some kind of interesting factoids here. There was a live dog on stage for much of that. Thank you to the Huff family, who lives right down the street. Several eighth graders were actually members of the Pitt Orchestra, so just the amazing talent that we have in this town seems to be boundless, that, you know, kids that aren't even high school age yet are actually so good at their instruments, they are playing in the Pitt Orchestra, which is amongst also hired professionals doing that job too. And the show was awesome. If you didn't see it, shame on you. It was really great. Thanks again to Jason for making the water resources link available and available by PDF. Thanks to Katie and Scott and Jeff and all the staff for this balanced budget. Looks really great and excited for some of the stuff that's forthcoming into that. Thanks again to the DPW for being both diligent and getting those pumps ordered and pestering the supplier and everything to make sure that they came in. That's, I've heard some grumblings about that from the community and also for the water leak that they corrected. Happy news, and this may have been mentioned earlier, but not in this meeting, but at a different meeting, the St. Clair, St. Clair County Community Mental Health Facility, so they opened a facility on King Road. They took a look at their needs in the area and decided, you know what, the one on Broadway actually is walkable for a lot of residents and people who use it, and let's keep that one open too. So I give them kudos for recognizing this need and finding the funding to keep that facility open in our community and to aid people within our community. Thanks Chief Slankster for taking my smoke detectors, really appreciate it. Thanks to the Civic Women's Club, who I saw walking down Water Street. They were gardening in the, you know, park where there's an archway that says Civic Women's Club. And it just, it was so nice to see people in our community volunteering their time to make this a better place. And speaking of that, please do consider joining a board. We've heard all the vacancies that are open tonight. Again, it's, you know, this community here that helps make this city a better place. And as Commissioner O'Brien just mentioned, we are here to serve you, but we can't serve you unless you reach out to us, contact us, call us, email us, send us a letter. We need to hear from you, your voice and your concerns, and understand how you'd like the city to go, what direction you'd like the city to go. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Ryan?
I'd just like to remind people of the blessing of the bikes and poker run for the Washington Life, at the Washington Life Center, which benefits the Washington Life Center. It's this Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m., and they'll have a 50/50 raffle and food and other things going on, so it'd be good to support them. Okay? That's it.
All right, my turn. All right, we had a fire authority meeting this week. Joe was able to get, round up a couple more guys for joining up. And if anybody wants to join the fire department, please see Joe. He's always looking for good recruits. We christened in the new kitchen last night. They provided a great dinner for the board and all the guys. We got to meet all the guys because we don't always see them. We approved our budget there for the fire authority. It was a very nice dinner. And we also are getting some new radios provided by Commissioner Vanabosh from County ARPA money, so that's coming through. So things are humming along on the fire authority. I'm glad you brought up the Memorial Day Parade. I've been working with Jesse. Jesse White usually does all that stuff, but we have everything, we're getting there. We got everything just about donated. He's got the flags. We've got all the food set up for, because we're going to have hot dogs again this year like we did last year. The Lions Club is helping out, the fire department's helping out, the police department's coming. We got everybody lined up, so it should be a good parade that Monday at 10:00 a.m. So everybody come on down and enjoy all that kind of stuff. And I too want to thank Scott and the staff. I know you guys want everybody to call you. I get stopped all the time, but what happens is they got to get to know you more, and the more they see you, the more they'll stop and talk to you. But I got rounded up numerous times this weekend just riding my bike through a neighborhood. I got stopped multiple times. Sometimes it takes me a while to get through the neighborhood. But I always stop, talk to them all, take all their issues. Scott knows I had to give them quite a few issues this week. They'll, they'll come to you, you know? It just takes them a little time and they just got to get used to you. But they see you up here enough, they see how you're, you're doing. You guys all do so good, they're gonna, they're gonna come to you. I mean, it just takes a little time. But thank you, Scott, for handling all the stuff that I brought you this week. It was, it was one of those weeks, so.
That's it.
Thank you. I too like to thank Scott, all the city staff, DPW for all their hard work. You know, as we talked about tonight, the testimonies that we gave and all the other things, that you guys really make this a great city, and we got great things coming. It means a lot to everybody. Couple other things to mention real quick. The Historical Society is doing a ticket fundraiser right now for Mackinac Island Getaway, working towards their funds, so you can get their tickets at Vera Grace and at A.M.A., they're $20 each, and it's for a package worth $1,500 at the Mackinac Island at the Grand Hotel. That's for a package worth $1,500 at the Mackinac Island at the Grand Hotel, and they're going to draw the winner at Maritime Days on August 4th. I'd like to congratulate the Boys Varsity Baseball Team on their Matt Gold Championship. And our, our CED Board Meeting will be this Wednesday, the 22nd. We're going to do our SWOT exercise. We're going to finish our 13 Ways book that we've been reviewing, and then we're going to get some new resources in, resource materials to go over. We're going to finish our redevelopment ready. We're on our last two chapters on that. And then we've also got some different business ideas that we're going to be talking about, that we've been reading and, and supporting new businesses coming in and what we can do to help them guide along into a successful business here in Marine City. And then we're also likely, starting in June, we're going to start having probably every other meeting, a special guest, somebody involved in MML or, or CED, some kind of a business. So, if people come to our meetings, some more business people or citizens too, that person will be there for a resource that you can make contact with and, and find out more things that are available for everybody. And with that, now we're going to go to closed session. The city commission will enter in a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Holly Tattman versus the city of Marine City. We will be moving to closed session to the conference room of City Hall if anybody would like to stay. We'll return back here into the guy center once the closed session has completed. You are more than welcome to stay in the building and here. We can move, but if nobody stays, we'll just stay here. We will not take any action while we are out. We'll only take action back in open session. So, with that, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Some move.
Support.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carried.